Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Cato. I am the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the Thursday, March 18th, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, remote participation meeting. As I can hear already, before we get started, if somebody has an open mic with some phone noise in the background, could we clear that up and silence that before we go any further, please? Okay, folks, so before I get started, here's a couple of things that's going to be very helpful. The last few meetings have been challenging because of people walking in, in the background while you're speaking. Maybe they're not using your phone, they could be using their own, but wherever you are, if you can be conscious of the traffic behind you. Another thing is, as I can hear already, we have pretty much a dog visitor every meeting. So if we can manage those pups to hold their comments until I ask for comments from any canines in the audience, that would be helpful. Anyway, so I have a script I have to read, let me get through this as quickly as possible, and we'll get moving. So, again, welcome to the Thursday, March 18th, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, remote participation meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. As a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Cato. I am the Chairman of the Auburn ZBA. In an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time and only unmute. You're going to speak. Permit me to confirm that all members in person and participation are on the agenda, and then acknowledge if you can hear me. Before I do so, I did receive the email that saying Mr. Cusi would not be participating tonight, so as a matter of record, it would be bringing Mr. Peter Jones, should he be present when I do roll call, up to full voting this evening, and we'll decide that as we go. So when I call your name, members, please acknowledge that you are here and you can hear me. Vice Chairman, Aaron.
I'm here, Rob. I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Chacolo, are you with us this evening, sir? All right, we'll come back to that. We know that Mr. Cusi is not. Ms. Roach, are you present? Hello. Do not hear from Ms. Roach.
Mr. Chairman, give me one second. Okay, go ahead. Start your roll call again with Mr. Chacolo.
Okay, Mr. Chacolo, are you present, sir?
I'm in clear, I can hear you.
Excellent, now we can hear you as well. Good evening, sir. Ms. Roach, are you present?
I am present.
Welcome and thank you for attending. Mr. Jones, sir? Mr. Jones, are you present, sir? I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Present.
Ah, there you are. I think we may have a little delay in your wife's.
I think most of my work is supposed to be done.
Okay. And Ms. Bush, are you with us this evening?
In here.
I'm here, though. And I can see Caleb Moody, Building Commissioner. Sir, are you obviously present?
I am.
All right, I have to toggle back to my other anticipated attendees here. Please bear with me. Okay, so as the town officials, we have Building Commissioner Caleb Moody, I acknowledge is present. Len Hughes Clerk Ginger Buto, are you present?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you for attending. And we have with us this evening, for her first time, and I'm sure she's going to enjoy this very much, DDIS Building Clerk Katrina Smalls.
Here.
Can you hear us?
Yes, here.
Excellent, welcome, and I hope you enjoy the meeting. Introduce your remote meeting. Good evening, everyone. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, March 18th, 2021, now called to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency and the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised by directed by the House to suspend public gatherings, and that's such the governor's order to suspend during the open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed to encourage this to be conducted remotely. The order to which you can find posted on the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations in the process. For this meeting, the ZBA is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some staff may be physically located in the select one meeting rooms of town halls, those employees are tasked with social distancing in accordance with the governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can call 1-646-749-3112 and enter the access code of 944-571-349. Or the public can join via computer at GoToMeeting.com/join944571349. Remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the zoning board of appeals, employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials have been provided to the members of the body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. So myself, as the Chair, Robert Cato, will introduce and speak around the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. For my response, for any response, excuse me, please wait until the Chair yields to the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with the other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford the public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify the names and addresses only, their addresses only, excuse me. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, it will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. If we have any difficulties, which fortunately we have not, if they do arise, the Chair will suspend the meeting while attempts to correct it are made, and then we will keep accurate minutes, avoiding any disconnections and reconnections of the members. Okay, so let me go back to my GoToMeeting here. Hopefully that's clear. Have I missed, did I miss anyone who may be in attendance in the meeting on the town side who would like to identify themselves for this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I would like to call the meeting to order and open up, do I have a motion to open up the 6 o'clock PM hearing? Actually, got here, requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to have a home business on property located in the Old Homestead Ave., Auburn map, map 24, parcel 206, lot 2, with the applicant's address. Hi, Ashley Garcia, are you present?
I'm here.
Hi, Ashley. My name is Robert Cato. I'm the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to call and request a vote of the meeting to be opened, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you, and you're going to give us a description of what you're trying to accomplish, okay? Do I, hang on one second, do I have a motion to open a 6:00 PM hearing?
It's Chairman Michael Marin, I'll make a motion, open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Marin. Do I have a second?
Chacolo, second.
Mr. Chacolo. Ms. Roach.
Approve.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, excuse me. Miss Josh.
Approve.
And Ms. Bush.
Approve.
Thank you, okay. I'm going to, Ms. Garcia, I'm going to yield the floor to you. You want to spend a few minutes explaining what you're trying to get accomplished?
Absolutely, thank you. I'm here today to ask the Town of Auburn for permission to open a home online based business here at my property. I work in an online clothing boutique, and I am drop shipping items here from my home. I don't have too much info yet, I mean, pretty much I could read this paragraph that you all see here in front of me if you want me to. This is, this is all new to me, so I'm sorry that I don't have the absolute speech right now for you, but I'm opening a women's home fashion boutique. I have a website that I purchased a domain from now, and my goal here is drop shipping women's fashion items to all U.S. customers. Thank you.
Okay, so I am going to turn it over to, do we have any, first of all, do we have any abutters present who would like to speak before we turn it over to the board members? Okay, last call for abutters on this matter?
Through the Chair.
Yes, sir.
So we have multiple abutters present. We have 15 individuals on the meeting. I don't, are you not able to see their names on your screen?
Well, I do. Well, I mean, I have some initials here, but doesn't tell me if they're active or not. I see some active pages, but that's about it.
Okay.
So all people here for this particular hearing?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to go through?
On my phone line.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to go through each and see if they'd like to comment on this hearing?
I think that would probably be the best, sir. If possible to dual through that, where you create the list while the members of the board seek to acquire some knowledge of this.
Yeah, why don't you go through the board comments, and I'll get a list together.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to start with the Vice Chairman, Mr. Marin, sir. Do you have any questions, concerns of the applicant, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it so much for the applicant. Thank you for being here this evening. I did just re-review your paragraph brief, and it answered a couple of my questions. So I only have one, for the record. Given that it's an online boutique, I'm assuming that you're not anticipating any customer traffic at your home, is that correct?
Correct. I will offer local pickup, but that will be for a mutual meeting space in a public location.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions I'll reserve for now, and if we have any discussion with the abutters. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo, sir?
Hi, good evening. To the petitioner, will you be shipping goods from your house?
On occasion, I may ship an item from the Auburn local post office, but ultimately, most of my items are drop shipped, meaning that they're purchased from me, and I then purchase from the wholesaler, and the item is shipped from the wholesaler to the customer.
Thank you very much. That's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roach?
I do not have any questions of the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Jones? Wrong, thank you. Thank you. And just again, for the record, Mr. Jones will be a full voting member this evening, but I'm also going to ask Ms. Bush, because I believe in the participation and training process for our alternate members. So Ms. Bush, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what we'd like to do then, if we have accumulated our list, Caleb, do we have a list present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can go down the list.
Okay, that would be very helpful, and I appreciate that. So I'm going to yield the floor to Caleb, and he's going to buy a policy that I read earlier. I will start a timer when you begin. You'll have three minutes. If there's something that certainly needs to be covered in terms of more time, we can do that, but I think in the interest of, you know, conserving time and the other applicants that we have this evening, so go ahead, sir, whatever you're ready.
Okay, through the Chair, I have an Anthony Russo. Do you have any comments on this hearing?
I do not.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Is that it for this particular hearing, Caleb?
No. Just, Mr. Chairman, give me a second, I'm going down the list. Now I have a Charlie V. Do you have any comments on this hearing? Charlie V, any comments on the hearing? You have to unmute yourself if you'd like to comment. Okay, then I have an Erin Shermaney. You'd have to unmute yourself if you have any comments on this hearing.
I have no comments or questions, thank you.
Okay, then I have a Judith Jazz. Any comments on this hearing?
No, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, then I have a Judith Jazz. Any comments on this hearing?
No, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, then I have caller two, who is not labeled, caller six and caller seven. So I have three people that have called in. If we could try to go one at a time, if you have any comments, introduce yourself.
But I am for the Willis property.
Okay, does anybody have any comments on this hearing?
Right, okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're good.
You want to give them a shout out, Caleb?
I think we're good, Mr. Chairman, you can move on.
Okay, so we've given the, any abutters, the concerns with the opportunity to speak. So hearing none, seeing none, we'll go around with the members of the board one more time. Mr. Marin, given that no comments from the abutters, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Chacolo?
I am fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Roach?
Nope, all set.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
All set, thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Bush?
I'm all set, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a, since we have no more comments from the public or abutters or the members of the board, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I vote to close the hearing.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Close.
And the Chair, Mr. Cato, vote to close, thank you. Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM application for special permit for an Ashley Garcia under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to have a home business on property located at Old Homestead Ave., Auburn map, map 24, parcel 206, lot 2. Is there a motion on the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Excellent.
Oh, second.
Mr. Chacolo, I registered a second from you. Ms. Roach?
I would approve that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Approved.
Thank you. And myself as Chair, Mr. Cato, I approve. So congratulations, Ms. Garcia. I'm sure you can be in touch with Caleb, and you'll get all the paperwork and signatures, whatever's necessary to get you started.
Thank you, I appreciate everybody's cooperation and support.
Good luck, I hope it goes well for you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll give them about 30 seconds to kind of get resettled here, and they can sign off if that's enough for them, and then we'll move on to 6:05.
Okay, am I, am I able to dismiss from this meeting?
Yes, you are absolutely all set to go. Anybody that's related to this meeting, one of the abutters, there'll be no more conversation once this is done, but you're all set.
Thank you, God bless.
All right, just, I do see one or two more people leaving, at least one more just did. So, okay, I think we're in pretty good shape. So we have the 6:05 PM applicant, Sean Griffin of Griffin Homes LLC, requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to construct a two-family home on property located at 7 Willis Street, Auburn map, map 02, parcel 210. Is the, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion, open the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I approve the motion to open.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Approved.
Thank you. And myself, Chair, we approve. So is the applicant, Sean Griffin, present?
Yes, I'm here.
Excellent, thank you, Sean. Good evening, thank you for joining us. I'm going to yield the floor to you, and if you want to give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish, and then we'll speak to hear from any abutters that may be present. So go ahead, sir.
Okay, I'm going to have my engineer, Zach Kuchar, do most of the talking about what we're doing here.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes, sir. So if you could introduce yourself, you know, what firm you represent, and you're involved in the project of this day.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Zach Luttor, HS&amp;T Group, and I am the project engineer, kind of leading the project from start to finish. I see that you have the letter of intent opened up. I'll just kind of go through some bullet points through that, just in case anybody didn't read it. I won't read it verbatim, I'll save you guys the time. So basically, what we're looking to achieve here is, right now, 17 Willis is a vacant lot, and we are proposing to construct a two-family dwelling with associated grading utilities and general site work, each unit having an attached garage and also a paved driveway that would connect to Willis Street. My client, Mr. Griffin, is pursuing this two-family as he intends to occupy one of the units and then also rent one of the units out just to help offset the cost of the mortgage. The general neighborhood of Willis Street is single families, there are some two families, and also there are some, it's near Selfridge Street, which there are some commercial properties along that street as well. This is on the portion of Auburn closer to the Lister side. The overall size of the structure is 40 feet wide by 42 feet long, roughly 1,700 square feet footprint, leaving each unit to be about 20 feet wide by 42 feet long, roughly 840 square feet footprint per unit. We went with this kind of model just to keep the overall size of the structure down, just so it wouldn't be kind of over-imposing two-family, so we did keep the units themselves relatively on the smaller side. And if you look at kind of the surrounding neighborhood, even given like the neighboring property, many of those homes based off the GIS are 50 feet in length, I believe 160 over 40 feet. So we wanted to keep it kind of similar to what's going on in the neighborhood. We didn't want to propose kind of like, you know, an oversized structure just to obtain the two units, so we feel this is kind of the good, the good configuration for the site. There are some wetlands, as you see on the plans to the rear of the site, and that's associated with the culvert and the overall drainage of Newton Street. So if successful tonight, we would move on to Conservation Commission as well as Planning Board, if, like I said, if we were successful tonight. In terms of all other zoning, this will meet all other dimensional requirements, fronted setbacks, and also the area required for a two-family dwelling. I'd just like to throw our opinion in there that we feel that granting the special permit to allow the construction of a two-family dwelling in the RA zoning district will be consistent with the kind of mixed area and will not deviate from the intent or purpose of the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws and ordinance. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, concerns, and just further general discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. So do we have a abutters present that would like to speak regarding the hearing to this point? If you could identify yourself by name and address, and we'll try to accumulate a list.
Good for hearing. Okay? Yes, it's at 5 Willis Street.
Hi, ma'am, if you could just speak up a little bit, that would be helpful, if you could identify your name and your first and last name and address again, please.
Judy Jazz, 5 Willis Street, and I'm here with my husband, Jeff.
Okay, would you like to speak without a hearing, ma'am?
We just want you to know we approved the plan as he presented it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, this is Tony Russo, I'm the, I'm actually the seller of this lot, and I own the abutting corner lot of 11 Elmwood Street.
Okay.
And I just want to say that I'm fully behind this project. I actually, when I split the lot up, I bought this property since October, it was just over eight. I split it with the intention that I was going to put a two-family house there for income, and then I had lost my job last March due to the COVID situation, 30 years in hotel industry, out the tubes, so had to sell the lot, but I'm very much behind Mr. Griffin's plan.
Well, I'm sorry to hear about what you went through with the whole COVID situation. I know that particular industry was hit very hard, so I wish you the best of luck with all that, and thank you for your comments. So is there anyone else, abutters, present that would like to speak regarding the project?
Yes, hello, this is Charlie Van Gose on 18 Newton Street.
Could you just say your last name again one more time, please, sir, so we can get it written?
Absolutely, it's Van Gose, V as in Victor, A, N as in November, G, O, S as in Sam. You have me on there with my Greek name, Konstantin, but we'll go by Charlie.
Great, thank you so much, sir. You have comments this evening?
I have heard nothing but good things about Mr. Griffin, so I'm looking forward to seeing what good things he has to do. I just, some concern, or just more of an inquiry, if you will, with the wetland part of the lot, what they plan on doing there, if they plan on zoning it out or anything like that.
All right, so if I could go back to the applicant's engineer, sir? If you heard the question from the applicant in regards to how you plan on managing the wetlands back there, if you want to touch on that, or if you have to actually manage them at all?
So, just for the record, Zach Luttor, HS&amp;T. So the wetlands themselves will stay basically as-is. We designed the project to limit any kind of disturbance to those wetlands themselves. We're providing an erosion control plan that will help during construction prevent any sediment or anything like that go down into the wetland. There is a barrier that would run along the 30-foot buffer, you could probably see from that plan. Yep, exactly. So you can see there's some erosion control barriers, construction entrance, pretty typical erosion controls for this type of construction. Also, to help with the roof runoff, instead of just traditionally letting it flow over land, we're actually proposing two subsurface infiltration systems that will capture each unit's roof runoff and infiltrate back into the ground, so that will help kind of slow down some of the runoff in the area that would be created by the project. The wetlands themselves would not be deeded out or zoned out, I believe, from what the abutter commented. It would remain as part of the lot, but it would remain as-is. It wouldn't be disturbed under this proposal.
Excellent, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So back to the abutter. Konstantin, do you agree and understand what the?
I do agree. Yep, I do agree and understand. Just a follow-up question, will there be any fencing put up of any sort?
Fencing regarding the, for the boundary of the water or the entire property itself?
The entire property.
All right, so back to the petitioner or the engineer, are you planning on wrapping the yard and the fence at all?
No, there is no fencing proposed at this time. It's going to be left open, just like all the, basically, the abutting properties.
All right, to the abutters, sir?
No concerns, thank you very much.
You are welcome, thank you very much. Any other abutters present that would like to speak regarding the matter? Okay, so hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to go back to my members of the board. Vice Chairman, Aaron, sir, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions for the applicant, but a question for the Building Commissioner. Caleb, so based on the zone district for this, just confirmation for the record, so this is appropriate to be a special permit and not a variance, is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes. Mr. Marin, that's correct. It would require a special permit from the ZBA, site plan approval with the Planning Board, it would require a Conservation Commission filing, and it would also require land disturbance permits through the DPW, and they would look at the stormwater runoff. through the DPW, and they would look at the, um, stormwater runoff.
All right, thank you very much for that, uh, for that confirmation, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I'll reserve, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mr. Jaco?
No additional questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roach?
Um, I'll ask my, what I feel has sort of become my standard questions, um, just to clarify, I think it's checked on the permits, but, um, just for anybody who doesn't see those, this property is serviced by the Elm Hill Water District, is that correct?
To the applicant?
Yes, it is.
A question of whether it is serviced by the Downhill Water District, correct?
It is, this is, it's the roof, so you can explore, it is.
Okay, thank you.
And town sewer. Okay, and also town sewer.
Could I, well, uh, will the?
It's already, there's already sewer connection, I'm sorry, there's already sewer connection stubbed onto the lot from the past.
Okay.
Great, and then last question through the chair, just, um, how, what do you expect for timeline if, assuming you're successful tonight, um, what do you think start to finish on the build, I think sometimes that's a question that some of the abutters are, are looking to find out.
Uh, through the chair, Zach Luttor, HS&amp;T, um, so we do have, uh, quite a bit of permitting left to go, um, so I don't believe we realistically start until probably the summer, um, but, and, uh, Sean, please jump in if I'm speaking incorrectly, but I know his, his goal is to get this thing up as quick as possible, but I think he would take the summer to really get going and kinda try to button it up by the fall and, and be ready to go by winter, Sean, is that, is that pretty much accurate?
Yes, that's correct, um, and it's typically, that's a little bit of background on me, I'm, I'm a project manager for a home builder, um, so I have a lot of experience in this, and typically from the time of breaking ground, my experience has been it takes about six or seven months, uh, to complete the home, so I think that timeline that Zach just laid out is pretty accurate for what I'm trying to accomplish.
Okay, no further questions from me.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, just, uh, one question, um, how close is the nearest, uh, two, existing two families?
Uh, to the applicant, uh, or maybe one of the other residents on the street, sir, do you know, how many two families are there and how close are they together?
Uh, this is Tony Russo again, next door, I'm, I'm sorry to jump in again, but just to let you know, right down the end of Willis Street is a two-family that's on the market right now, um, so they, they, they are in the neighborhood.
And, and just to piggyback off of that, Mr. Chairman, Zach Luttor, HS&amp;T, uh, as, uh, Mr. Russo stated, there are, uh, it's basically on the corner of Willis and Jerome, there are a couple two-family sprinkles in there.
I am familiar with the area down there quite a bit, um, so, yeah, there, there is, I think on that side of the hill, over the years, some of those larger houses were either converted, uh, or they were intentionally built as duplexes, so in that area, it's not uncommon to see a few within the neighborhood.
That's my only question, thank you.
Excellent, um, Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, so with that being said, um, to the applicant, do you have anything else you'd like to add before I go back to the members of the board?
Uh, no, nothing further at this time.
Excellent, thank you, uh, and before I make a motion to close the public hearing, I just wanna make sure, no abutters or anybody else has joined the meeting in the meantime when I did not see it, uh, that wanna induce themselves. All right, I'll give you a five, four, three, two, one, hearing none, seeing none, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Thank you, uh, I believe that was Ms. Roach?
It's Jazz.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, pardon me, it's Vice Chairman Maron, I, I don't believe that was actually a board member, but, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, I appreciate the support and enthusiasm, so, um, for official stake, I'll, I'll just, uh, make the motion to close.
I think, I think it's clear that our audience members are very thrilled with our, with our television production here, so, I have a motion to close from Mr. Maron, and I have a second from Mr. Jaco, Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
This is me, and yes, I do, uh, vote to close.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jones?
Vote.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I vote to close, uh, do I have a motion on the 6:05 hearing for the applicant Sean Griffin of Griffin Homes requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to construct, you have a two-family property, a two-family home on property located seventeen Willis Street, Auburn Math, Math 2, parcel 210.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Thank you so much, sir, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jaco, uh, Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I'll approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Jones, yeah?
Approve, okay, Mr. Jones, I see that you voted to approve, uh, and the Chair votes to approve, so, sir, um, you can be in contact with, uh, the Department of Inspecial Services and make arrangements, uh, proceed through the remainder of your permitting process.
I would just like to say thank you, everybody, for, uh, the support and the time, and, uh, we appreciate it, and we look forward to keeping the project moving forward.
Good luck, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll second that, thank you all, and thank you to all my future neighbors for all your support as well.
Okay, so we can let these, uh, fine ladies and gentlemen sign off for a second, and then we can, I believe we want to either add a new business or some minutes if we have any, and then we?
Through the chair.
All right, looking pretty good, so, um, moving on to other business, we don't really have any minutes to prove, um, those have been taken care of, uh, next meeting is April fifteenth, 2021, um, if you have anything that needs to be brought on the agenda, please contact the Department of, uh, Inspecial Services, Caleb, do you have anything to add or anything that needs to be spoken in regards to the zoning board business?
No new business, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you so much, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Thank you so much, Mr. Jaco, do I have a second?
Yes, Chair, do.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
I'll approve the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Approve.
Thank you, adjourn, Ms. Bush?
Approve.
All right, and, uh, zoning board is, uh, the Chair approves to adjourn, so, good evening, everyone, stay safe, and we'll see you next month.